Okay, welcome to the Tuesday, March 10th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And I'll start. Roll call to the left.
Sean Pearson.
Carl Levis-Stardens.
Roz Chivik.
Okay, and I will appoint Kathy for Lindsey. So we have public hearing. Item A Z 2020-1701, Continuation of Sammy P. Inc., requesting a special permit for earth products excavation and processing on the westerly portion of the parcel on property located on Millbrook Road, Plainfield, MAP 10, block 17, lot 5, industrial one zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, John Feliciane Batteries LLC represents Sammy P., who was also present this evening, as well as David Kaye, project engineer from our office. This matter was a matter of consideration at the last month's meeting. The public hearing was open. At that time, we had not yet received an wetlands commission approval. We did go through the project in depth in terms of the excavation. We're excavating 165,000 cubic yards on 9.2 acres in three phases. The excavation is consistent with the previously approved plan for the east side portion of the property. Groundwater monitoring was conducted in the same year, and it is tabulated on sheet three of the plan set. We also did receive since that last meeting approval from the Human Wetlands and Water Courses Commission on February 25th. That was at a special meeting that they had had the prior week. There was no form for that meeting. I'd like to submit a copy of the minutes of that meeting for the record, identifying the application, and then it was passed. We also received since the prior meeting a comment letter from Your Towns Consulting Engineers CME Associates. Initially, that initial letter was received by our office dated February 4th. Since that time, we have made some minor revisions to address the comments of Your Towns Consulting Engineer. The only real comment that would require revision was the addition of a gate at the entrance driveway, which has been added. Some minor revisions to the groundwater calculations, which reviewed were submitted from CME and reviewed. They were found to be acceptable. I have a letter dated February 18th, 2020 from CME Associates to the commission, identifying the CME reviewed the materials and found that each of our February 4th comments have been satisfactorily addressed. The commission may wish to discuss the applicant's waiver request in section 12.3, 2.4 for groundwater monitoring wells. It appears the lowest excavation elevation is well above estimated high groundwater, and additional groundwater monitoring would not alter the proposed design. If the proposed excavation elevations are modified in the future, groundwater monitoring should be revisited. And that's signed by Chuck E. and P.E., CME Associates. If you remember correctly from the project on the east side of this property, we conducted groundwater monitoring in a series of standpipes. Those are results were tabulated. We conducted a groundwater monitoring regime very similar to that in this portion of the project, and the results again are tabulated on sheet three. None of the test pits that we had in the soil monitoring wells have exhibited any signs of groundwater over the last four months. In the bottom, our excavation is approximately 15 feet above the bottom of those test holes for those monitoring wells. With that said, based on the discussion from the last meeting, do you have any other questions?
Right, this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or a question for the applicant, please state your name and your question. Seeing no comments from the public, any comments from board members?
How was the groundwater elevation estimate?
So, we installed a series of monitoring wells in a couple of locations. In the excavation area, on the northwestern portion of the site, and then in a depressed area in the central part of the site. And by depressed area, I mean it was a low point in the grade. So the existing grade down in that low point is at elevation 166, 167. That grade quickly comes up to elevation 170, 180, and we then, by monitoring that bottom of that excavation, or bottom of that well, I'm sorry, shown on sheet eight of the plan set. The bottom of our test well is located here at elevation 150.8. The proposed grade in that area is about elevation 164, and so we are well above the bottom of the hole, which exhibited no signs of groundwater. That groundwater monitoring is actually done with a meter. We actually put a meter down to identify whether there's a presence of water or not, and it was not accounted in either hole. And again, those cross-sections are shown on sheet eight of the plan set. And this is the same methodology used on the other part of the site, along the east side of the excavation.
Any other questions from board members? Comments or questions from staff?
All my comments have been addressed, as have comments from the town engineer. We do have one outstanding item of these engineering fees to date, however, we do not have a golden yet, so we can do that in the future.
Last call from the public comment on this application. Board members? Public hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing. Motion by Sean, second by Roz. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, Z 2020-1713, Summertime Properties LLC, requesting a map amendment from RA 60 to RA 30 to a property located at 1832 Pickett Road, Central Village, MAP 14, block 76, lot 2A, and that's RA 60 zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Paul Archer with Articulate Survey, representing Summertime Properties, dealing with the, looking for a zone change on the, this property at the corner of Texas Heights and Pickett Road. What we have is here's the property that we're dealing with right here. If you start with that, you can see everything around us is the RA 30. We are currently zoned RA 60. But what we have right now, we have a piece of property in front of our exercise. We have a four-bedroom unit, and we have two duplex units here, okay? Right now, as everything sits here, it is a non-conforming entity as it sits. First of all, with a four-bedroom unit here, that's not allowed in your RA 60 zone. That has to be in the RA 30 zone. With the two duplexes, we're okay. With the amount of acres that we have right here, we do not meet the density required, so okay? At one time, we were looking, the goal of, our goal or objective is creating two parcels of land here. To separate the four-family away from the duplex, okay? And the way it sits right now, we can't do that due to the subdivision regulations require that you have 60,000 square feet of land excluding wetlands, okay? That is a subdivision regulation, not a zoning regulation, so we can't even go in and ask for a variance on that. So that's one of the main reasons why we're here, to get this down into the RA 30 zone, is the idea is to get these into two separate parcels. The biggest thing to remember this is that nothing is going to change. Everything is still going to act exactly the way it is. We can't add any more buildings. We can't do anything. So what you see out there now is it's going to operate, whether it's in the RA 60 or the RA 30, exactly the way it is now. The benefit that we're looking at is by being able to subdivide this, the town will now have the benefit of taxing another lot, okay? Right now, it solely taxes one entity. If we're able to subdivide this, we can now come back and the town can get more tax, more in separate lots. Not saying that now, by going for the zone change right now, which is going to then enable us to go to the next process, which would be to come back before you people with a subdivision, okay? Right now, being zone RA 60, we cannot come before you, and there's no way we can subdivide that due to the wetlands factor. Probably, if we get this into the RA 30 zone, we're probably going to need a couple variances from the regulations, basically dealing with the densities that are allowed each. With the garden family apartments, is what you call it, in the RA 30, you basically need 30,000 square feet per unit. With the duplexes, you're going to need 30,000 square feet per unit if they're in the RA 30s. So right now, no matter, even if you leave this as it is, you don't meet today's density regulation. The other thing that we're really trying to deal with is we're trying to make this parcel as conforming with the regulations today that we can. Right now, it is a non-conforming, conforming entity that's operating. It's still going to operate, again, whether we change this to RA 30 or not, okay? But our goal is to make this, the other positive is, as we're trying to get this out of, if a person buys this, they're basically going to keep a better upkeep. The idea is to have a better upkeep if you have an all-urban rather than a corporation owning the whole thing. I don't want, so that's the goal, is to separate these, to make them viable for sale rather than trying to sell them to a corporation that's going to buy the whole thing and be just rental units. But again, the idea is to try to make this conforming. Now, if you just find changing this from RA 60 to RA 30, you're automatically making it more conforming than it is now. Because the garden family apartments are not allowed in the RA 60, they're allowed in the RA 30s. So just putting this into the RA 30 makes it a better, more step towards conforming. The other problem in the RA 30 is whether or not they have the ability to tie into sewers. They do have the ability to tie into sewers. The biggest thing that we would like is if, if you look in favor of this and changing this into the RA 30, that, the septic systems on these have all been upgraded and just redone, that we would like to have it that, at the time if the septic systems need repair, they tie into the sewer instead of at this time they tie into the sewer. That's pretty much in a nutshell. Again, I can't emphasize enough that we're not proposing anything new. The only thing we're proposing is basically a line on a piece of paper. Everything else is going to stay exactly how it is. It's going to operate exactly how it is. We can't add more buildings. The buildings won't expand due to the fact that there isn't enough room for the density to change. But by allowing us to go from the RA 60 to the RA 30, you're giving us the opportunity to go to the next step, which would be subdivision.
So if I heard your presentation correctly, it will not make it conforming, and it will not meet the zoning requirements of space. Am I correct? So the argument is that it's making it more conforming, but it will still continue to be non-conforming?
Right now, if you change this from the RA 60 to the RA 30, it's still not going to be conforming. It's still going to stay it is. But it would allow this building to be conforming because it would be allowing the RA 30. Now, the option thing would, next thing to do would be, we would go for a variance, which we would be allowed to do because it's a zoning regulation, which we can vary. So if we were able to go in and get a variance on the density, then all these buildings become conforming.
But it would also allow for additional subdivision after the fact?
It would allow for a subdivision, but it wouldn't allow for any more buildings. You could not expand this. You don't, there's no way you could ever put another buildings on here or expand it with the density that it is. But all it's allowing you to do is basically put a piece, put a line on a piece of paper. You're going to meet, we're going to meet the areas. The area requirements are there. It's the density requirements there.
And this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the audience with a comment or a question on this application?
Can I do Greg Claude from Killingley Engineering Associates? Paul, where'd you get that image? It's on your map.
From Nick Skol, the owner.
Yeah, that's my image. And I want to go for the record, I don't have, given not any permission for you to use it, put your license on it, put your.
Your name's on it.
Where it came from. You took my image, photocopied it, and put it on your thing, and I think that's an unethical violation. For the record, Paul. You should have asked for my permission to use my exact image on your letterhead.
All right, so timeout, gentlemen. Ryan, is there a requirement of an original engineering plan, or is it scaled?
It's a compilation map that basically says that all the information taken on here is from other sources.
It's a photo image of Killingley Engineering's plan, which is copyrighted, which he has put on his letterhead. It's his thing, and I just pointed out for the record that I have issue with that.
Noted for the record.
I have issue with that.
I have quality, guys.
And you gentlemen can solve that just from outside of this public hearing.
Yeah, I'm just pointing it for the record.
Noted for the record.
From our perspective, this is a zone change. We do not have the requirements for official happy present.
Noted for the record.
No, thank you.
Other comments or questions from the audience?
All right, Gagnon. Is this the same proposal that was brought forth a year or so ago, or has this changed in some way?
I don't, I've never brought it forth. I don't believe there's ever been a zone change brought forth under.
This is what I'm asking. So this is a different proposal? There was something brought forth to the board about a year ago?
So this property has been before this?
And that was probably for the subdivision ahead of time, maybe?
It was a site plan, I think.
Something, you wanted to change something at that time?
It wasn't me.
Oh, I know the project, so.
Any other comments or questions? Yes.
Ralph Bighop, we live across the street from that. I was just wondering where this sewer is going to come from?
Right around the corner.
Yeah, well, yeah, there's no sewer on our roof.
Nope, there is. There is. It's going to come down, yard Pickett Road, behind this property here, is what I've been told.
So it's not currently hooked up, is the?
The buildings are not currently hooked up.
But there is an area where a hookup could be possible?
That's what I was told, yes. I can't answer that question. I haven't researched that, so I don't know. I was just told by the property owner that he has the ability to tie into the sewer.
You have a proposed well on the mid-lot. Are you currently running off of that now?
Yes.
For all properties? So you're trying to not get help from water source anywhere?
Don't let me in.
Is the owner of the property here?
He is not. One of his representatives.
Any other comments or questions from board members on this application? Any other comments or questions from audience? Comments or questions from staff? All right, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing. Motion by Roz, second by Sean. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. I'll call the regular meeting to order. We have additions and corrections to the agenda. So the first thing is our item 12A is executive session. It's been requested that we move that up to item 4A, so that we can let our attorney out earlier this evening. And then we also have items B and C to add under new business. So I'll entertain a motion to make those adjustments to the agenda. I have a second by John. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, so that would move us to item 4A, which is executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session with the board members, alternate staff, attorney, and any board of selectmen members who will attend. Okay, I have a motion by Roz and a second by John. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, and do we have access? Okay, so let the record show, we returned from executive session at 7:33 PM, and there is no action to be taken. Moving on to item five, citizen's participation. Is this opportunity for anyone in the audience who has a comment for the board to address it at this time? All right, moving on to unfinished old business. Item A Z 2020-1701, continuation of Sammy P. Inc., requesting a special permit for earth products excavation and processing on the westerly portion of the parcel on property located on Millbrook Road, Plainfield, MAP 10, block 17, lot 5, industrial one zoning district. And items for discussion of the board members. Did anyone have any discussion about the waiver request for the groundwater monitoring? So the waivers do have to be voted on separately?
I do not have any comments on that. The town engineer did not have any comments. He was satisfied with the creation of those waivers. If you'd like one of those waivers, you should have the exact language.
Yes. So there's two separate waiver requests? Okay, so in the letter dated January 13th, Dear Commissioners, in association with the above referenced application for special permit and on behalf of our client Sammy P. Inc., pursuant to section 12.3, 2.8 of the Town Plainfield zoning regulations, we respectfully request waiver of said regulations for the following sections. Section 12.3, 2.4, B, 1.6. Two test holes that transect the proposed excavation were completed on October 4th, 2019. Standpipes were installed in the test holes to allow for periodic groundwater monitoring. Groundwater monitoring has been completed monthly since excavation of the test holes, and along with the elevation of wetland systems that are adjacent to the proposed excavation and the water surface elevation of the Lowe's Detention Pond located westerly of Millbrook Road. We believe we have the information required to establish the elevation of seasonal high groundwater. Groundwater was not encountered in either of the test holes, and the bottom of the deepest test hole is elevation 150.5. The bottom of the proposed excavation is elevation 158 at its lowest point. Given the amount of vertical separation between the bottom of the proposed excavation, the bottom of the test holes, the highest wetland elevation, and the detention pond water surface elevation, we do not believe that additional information is required to establish seasonal high groundwater elevations. We therefore request a waiver from the requirements to, number one, replace the monitoring wells when their locations have been eliminated due to the proposed excavation. Number two, install the monitoring wells in accordance with standard well drillers materials and practices. And number three, show the groundwater contours and direction of flow on the site operations plan. So I can entertain a motion on the waiver request? Okay, I have a motion to grant. Do I have a second? Second. A second by Roz. All those in favor of granting the waiver? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, waiver is, request approved. Looking at suggested items of approval for the application. All truck traffic to utilize Millbrook Road to Norwich Road Group 12. No use of Town Plainfield roads aside from Millbrook Road allowed unless there is no state road alternative to make a delivery within the town. Each phase to be reclaimed prior to opening a new phase. A bond of $62,580 for purposes of ENS control, phase one prep, and reclamation of phases to be submitted to the town and held until site completion to staff satisfaction. Plans to be printed on Mylar film and submitted to P&amp;Z office for commission signatures. Applicant is responsible for filing the Mylars with the town clerk. A driveway permit will be required for the entrance, and then engineering fees shall be paid prior to filing of the Mylars. That totally is not determined yet. Is that right, Ryan?
Correct.
I'd like a motion to approve with those conditions.
I have a motion to approve with the conditions as read. And I have a second by John. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, application is approved with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, Z 2020-1713 of Summertime Properties LLC, requesting a map amendment from RA 60 to RA 30 for property located at 1832 Pickett Road, Central Village, MAP 14, block 76, lot 2A, RA 60 zoning district. Items for discussion on this application?
So we're going to, you're looking to do this change, but it's not a change. You just want a line, right? Everything is going to be created.
This is a zone change.
Okay.
Could allow them to go back for, for.
Right, that's what my question was. They have to go back for anything else. Okay. It opens the availability to develop the property in a way that is not currently allowed in the RA 60 zone. So the thing that sticks in my mind is, although the argument's made that it makes it more conforming, it's still not conforming, and allows for further subdivision in an already non-conforming. So that is an issue of concern, in my view.
Okay, I'm not understanding that bit. Like, so it automatically allows for more subdivisions? They don't have to go back to?
No, they will.
They would still have to come back. Okay, correct. So RA 60 does not allow for additional subdivisions. So the RA 30 would make it available for additional subdivision.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay, I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second? Do you want to discuss your motion, Sean?
I'm just, the whole thing is, it's already come to the course once before. I don't, I don't feel this is being done to faith. I think there's more behind this, and it just doesn't deserve it. That whole, that whole swamp of land, which is taking a map to back to get to Killian, is RA 60 that's abutting it. The only thing is RA 30 is across the street.
And my concern is related to, you know, there's a reason RA 60 has the density that it does. And given the location, I would have a concern about allowing more density in that area and further subdivision in that area.
So we have a motion to deny on the table. Do we have a second? Okay, so I have a second by Kathy. So all those in favor of denying the application, say aye. 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 Any opposed to the deny? Aye. Okay, so we have a four to one denial. All right, moving on to item C, Z 2020-1715, continuation of North End Automotive, requesting a site plan review for automobile service and sales on property located on Norwich Road, Central Village, MAP 15, block 75, lot 3A, C2 zoning district.
Good evening. For the record, Greg Claude, licensed landscape surveyor and partner over at Killingley Engineering Associates.
I know you don't have a ton of audience, but we still have an audience here tonight. Thank you.
I represent the applicant tonight, and I have plans that I can spread out before you. These are revised through to February 6th. So the property is located on Norwich Road, which, we're in the vicinity of Victorian. I believe it was a restaurant at one time, it's right on the side of us. This is the vacant field, west to the south. The property is just under 5 acres, 5.99, 5 acres, this is the acre boundary area to prepare. The property is just under five acres, 599, five acres, acre boundary, early to prepare. The front part is a field. There's a weapons in the middle part of the, at the back of the field, in the open area. Then it's wooded and it kind of goes up very steeply with a, with a steep slope in the back. That's the proximity of the property. The proposal that the applicant had for you is to, to do a automotive repair and sales facilities. Eighty-four hundred square feet. The building is 60 by 140. There would be an office part of the building. There are four service days, parks and storage. We have a floor plan up here that shows everything. We would have associated parking would be to the south of the building. We have our entrance coming off of 312 Norwich Road. This area over here would be displayed for automobiles, as would be a small area here that would be used for automobiles. We did vote for ZDA in January and received approvals for a certificate of location. Part of DMV requirements is that the town, ZDA approves the location for any automobile dealership. So that has been approved, and we identified a site license area of 1.1 acres. It's not a parcel, it's just a site license area. What we're saying is that our automobile area will not expand outside of that in the work for the part of their DMV permits. So we did get approvals for that. We did go in front of weapons as well, and we received approval from them in just last month as well for the site work and the activity that we have. Very little clearing is involved. There is a bit of clearing, just some scrub that comes in into the building area here. We're going to just cut those roughly 10 feet inside of the property line there. We do have parking requirements. We do have calculations on the plan here. When you go through your regulations, we're required to have 13 spaces. We have provided 14, and we are required to have one handicap per ADA requirements, and we have provided that as well. Parking is across from the building there. We have screened dumpster area that is to the rear of the building. We also are fencing in the area adjacent to the weapons. And we, we will be providing some plantings along the side of the parking area out front here. We will have proposed site sign at the front island. There'll probably be some signage on the building as well for the business. We will be tying into the sewer. The sewer line currently ends in front of Victorian, 200 feet away from us. So their last manhole is right here. There is a stub that was provided for future expansion. We will be providing another manhole here, even the highway line jogs at this point. So we have to kind of come out about 10 feet or so. It's actually 8 feet. And then we're going to propose to come down the side of the road, the shoulder of the road, and we're going to propose another manhole here. That will allow us to tie in both our bathrooms and our floor drains. Floor drains will be tied in through a oil water separator, which is the item that you see here. It is very typical for floor drains to go through that. There is a registration process that happens with DDP when that is constructed. That doesn't happen at this point. It happens when they construct it. It's just, it's just really a registration that they do so that they know it exists. We will be tying into the water line that is on the opposite side of the road. Trying to think what else we have. Drainage, we're just doing an open drainage plant. Since the parcel does drain to the back already, we're going to kind of pitch our water over to a stormwater, we're proposing here. Norm Tivo, who was my business partner and the PD civil engineer who did the drainage, he sized it for a 50-year storm. So, and he's got a lot of safety factor built in there because we have very gravelly soils up here, so we know some of the water will infiltrate into the ground. But he's ignoring that. He decides this, or we can go over to that area, and that's where our drainage can settle out. So we have no off-site for that. We did submit, I know there were some comments from Ryan that we had. Ryan, I think one of your comments was regarding some fencing along the front property line. I believe you wanted a split rail fence. We did put a note that we would put split rail fencing, and these revised plans that you had, we would have a detail on the detail sheet showing that split rail fencing that would be there to help better define where the property line, the street line is. You also wanted a detail of the concrete dumpster pad. That has been added as well to the detail sheet that will be screened. It's on the... It's on the last sheet. So we'll provide a stock eight and six foot high around that dumpster pad to screen it from anybody seeing. And there's a concrete pad under it that we provide. I think other comments that you had was in regards to WPCA approval of the line and then the fire marshal. Those have been, I believe the fire marshal you were handling internally.
Yes, WPC, WPCA did not have any comments for these, so I assume they're fine if they wanted to see it. Fire, fire chief would like a Knox box on the building. I don't know if you're absolutely acceptable to that?
What is that, though?
A Knox box. It's a, it's a lock box in the building. You take the key so that...
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's unlocked from the vehicle, from the fire trucks.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you'll have a problem with that. And then the last, I think the last line of approvals that we had is from CDOT for the curb cut and all that. We do have a letter from CDOT that came in dispatch week. They have four items that they want us to finalize. One of them is they changed their pavement patch detail or repair detail. It's wider now, it's something new, so they're asking us to change that. They're also asking us to install a 30-inch stop sign instead of 18, which I think is huge. We'll go with what they're asking for there and trying to keep it together. They also want us to get a letter from the WPCA indicating that they will take ownership of the sanitary line and not the OT. And then the, the last comment was, here's one spot here where we're relocating the end rail of the I R O, so they want us to add their new detail of their end anchoring detail. So those are all things we've done, set back, but we don't have that final letter from them yet. That just happened a couple of weeks ago. But if there's any questions, I don't put it up to you and I'll be glad to ask you to answer them.
All right, any items from board members or the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. The development does it extend into the weapons, the site license area, and the tubs, what's the reason for that?
I'm not sure. The owner wanted to do that. He can't really put anything in there because it's required for weapons. I, I kind of think it's, it's just something, it's an imaginary line that DMV sees so that they have a A2 lineup. And I know we plan to maybe in the future doing something over here that would not be part of this.
Did you, did you need it to get us?
No, there's no certain, there's no certain area or acreage. So it's just something he wanted to do to show it here and divide it off, and it was something that DMV signs off on. So I, I could think, yeah, I thought the same thing what he was asking for, but didn't get too many thoughts. Since we would be regulated by the DMV back there with violence.
Okay, under suggested conditions of approval, we have any revisions required by DOT shall be on the Mylars. Mylars to be filed with the town clerk and no zoning permit until DOT permit has been issued. Are there any other items for discussion from board members or staff? Okay, hearing done.
I have a question. Ryan mentioned a split rail fence along the front. Isn't that probably a stone wall crossing front already?
Yeah, it does. It's all, will show us these little, I'll call them ant eggs. They look like ant eggs. But there's one spot here where it ends, and he wanted to just put some a little bit over here in front of the cars, so it's maybe, maybe 60 feet of it.
If there's an existing barway there where the stone wall ends, the property will continue to, the stone wall picks back up on the...
On Victorian, yeah.
On Victorian.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So it is, it is just this area right here, about 60 feet of it.
Thank you for clarification. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing done. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion with...
I'll second.
With the conditions for second.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve with conditions. I have a second by Roz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, application is approved with conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Z 2020-1728 of Sanger Mono Properties LLC requesting special permit for renewal of excavation permit, Z 2015-0654, on property located at 1221 Norwich Road, Plainfield, MAP 5, block 4, lot 42A, C1 zoning district. This does require a special permit. So a public hearing, sorry.
Scheduled for public hearing.
I have a motion scheduled for public hearing. Do I have a second? I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Scheduled public hearing in April. Item B, Z 2020-1736 of Kevin Trayen and Christopher Bellevance requesting a map amendment at 96 Plainfield Pike Road from RA 60 to industrial one. And this also requires a public hearing. I have it. Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And just make a note that that was actually item C. I have a statement, so now it's item B. Z 2020-1733 of Gregory Clay requesting a special permit for an accessory apartment at 100 Shepherd Hill Road, and this also requires a public hearing.
Make a motion to send this to public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Sean. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Scheduled for public hearing in April. Moving on to item 10, review and act on minutes from the February 11th meeting. Did anyone have any adjustments? I just have a correction to my name. There's an S on the end. Mutation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Roz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I was not made it, so I would understand.
Understood, so one exception. Moving on to correspondence.
We have some correspondence. We have TC CD outlook. We have one of those.
And we can make photocopies if members want to. Perfect.
We have a check at the Federation, one of the zoning agencies. We can also make copies of that.
That was it?
That was it.
All right, so other had been moved up to the beginning of the agenda, so that brings us to report from zoning enforcement.
Only I know I have to report on that has had some movement is the shed property, the old Joseph savings. We issued a notice of violation, delivered by state marshal to the property owners, and we did have a meeting with the property owner last week. We are going to be working to bring it into parks. So they also have to apply for a new application within 30 days if they wish to modify the usual cycle. We'll see what the property...
So you mentioned that was the only one with a change. How many outstanding pending cases do we have right now?
I don't know at this point.
Okay. Could you just provide us a summary of the next...
I can.
Thank you. Question, is that the building in the front and not in the back? Building, the building's in the front as opposed to the back?
It was for construction of the sheds in front of the building, and we approved it in the rear. It was for sheds approved in the areas that are approved for display. It's also for our treehouse that was constructed, we didn't house sewer easement on the rear of the property. Also, we found out that there is an apartment located within the building that was not approved by the commissioner. Commissioner did approve three apartments, two above the old bank and one on the right side of the building. Apartment was constructed without a zoning permit or building permit in the old bank area. So that needs to be corrected.
Since they moved in?
Since they moved in.
And am I correct, there's not even turn radius, like heaven forbid a fire should happen, like...
And it was, well, comments from fire chief is that there is no way to get a fire truck in there.
So they haven't noticed a violation? Is it a complete cease and desist?
They have to be working on reducing their inventory and coming back into plans. They have 30 days to resubmit a new plan if they want to take that more in this area.
So will they be in front of the board in April?
I'm hoping so.
Okay, and if they're not, would we then at that time issue a cease and desist?
We can require them to shut down. Possibly have to take it to court, but the property owner seems to want to work with the property over its leasing to individual houses.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other notes from zoning enforcement?
That is it.
Okay. A report from planning and zoning.
Nothing other than my...
All right. And that leaves us with adjournment. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sean. Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.